We call this meeting ordered about 6:03. And first order of business is to review and approve the minutes from the last meeting of January 8.
Yeah, move to approve.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
All abstaining.
Okay. And then Shelley?
So there are 12 warrants presented for signature, totally $179,782.81. I sent out the general fund and school choice reports ahead of time. Everything looks to be on track to meet budget. Nothing major to report at this time, but I did want to just let you know that I'm keeping an eye on the central office expenditures. You'll see that there is a warrant in there to pay the first half of the year for the shared costs for anything central office related. What I'm discovering is that there are lines that exist at Frontier that may not necessarily exist at the elementary school. So that could be problematic for us, although I don't think it's anything significant at this point that we need to be looking at. I just wanted you to know that I was watching it. I'm happy to take questions if anyone has questions.
Anybody have any questions?
Don't look them up.
No? Not on this, maybe on budget stuff later?
Yes.
Alright. Not to rush things, but I want to move right along.
Hurry.
Why not? Any public comment this evening? Yes?
Hello, I'm Julie Allen, and I was asked to share that you've probably noticed there are far fewer red shirts here tonight than there were last time. Twenty-five of our colleagues at the elementary level are attending the SEI course. And that'll be going on for 12 weeks, I believe it's three hours a session in the evenings. So they didn't want to be here, so I just wanted to pass that along, so thank you.
Can you just tell me what the acronym is, sorry?
Sheltered English Immersion, it's the mandatory, state mandated requirement for teachers now.
Alright. Anyone else? Okay. Update on capital requests, is that all intended? I don't see our... I don't see Mr. Hill.
No, so those are... What's that? My things? So basically Ken has brought them forward to the capital committee.
Yes.
It's just kind of for him to give us an update where those are at, since he's not here.
Okay. Ken, yes.
All I know is they're discussing them.
Late scratch.
Was there a list of them? I'm trying to think, we were...
I snuck them all together.
I was just trying to think if I could answer anything I was at the meeting last time for a bit of time. Really the main thing we discussed was the generator. That I talked about, I think the rest of this stuff was pretty straightforward, the bathrooms, flooring.
So we submitted four?
Yep.
The building generator, the restrooms, the classroom floors. And the courtyard repair was more about getting it on their radar?
Yes.
Because we applied for a grant that will require money probably next year, but we're just not surprised on that that was coming.
Yep, perfect. They had asked me to find out about the generator, which we've done already, you know, so I'll report that in advance.
I do so.
Okay, any questions on that topic? No, okay. Moving right along to further discussion on the next year's proposed budget.
So I emailed a bunch of documents ahead of time. You have a narrative summary, you have a line-by-line summary which looks similar, there's two pages, it looks similar to what we reviewed last time. And then we have a school choice analysis, so we're gonna go over all those pieces. I'm gonna start with the narrative and just kind of read through.
Thank you.
Don't talk too quickly, just ask me to stop or if you have a question while I'm moving along. So we are at 2.68 percent with the second draft budget, or $129,000 increase. That is down from our last meeting. Now if you remember, we did make some changes prior to the last meeting, and one of my formulas was wrong, so percentage at that time was 3.31. We did massage the numbers quite a bit and got that down to 2.68 after I went ahead and corrected the issue with the spreadsheet. So we're down about $30,000 from last time that we spoke.
Okay.
I do want to address a question that David had through email that came in to me. I live after five today, so if you look at the bottom, the last line of this summary, on the top paragraph, it does mention that the overall operating budget of the school is down. And I think that that brings up a lot of questions for people, so I'm happy to take them if I don't answer them now. But we are looking at a potential programmatic change in the early childhood program. We have a retiring teacher, and there are some spatial issues within the school that Tina has expressed a need to reduce the number of early childhood classrooms down from three to two, which would change some staffing, which is why the budget overall is down. Now we don't see that on the general fund because a good portion of that came from early childhood separate funding on its own. But as a whole, when we add up all of our funding sources, we are down a little bit in that line, just not to the general fund. Does that make sense to everyone before I move on?
It makes sense, can I just ask a little question about that? So are we doing... Are we increasing the class size of the remaining classes? And are we doing this because of reduced demand? And/or are we gonna be turning people away now because we only have two classes instead of three? Sorry.
Do you feel like you can speak to those pieces, or...
Sorry, I should look over there.
Class sizes will stay about the same, we're going up to about 15, 15 is our max for that. The need we pursue is to provide services to those students that need special education, and we pair them one-to-one typically is kind of the ratio for that. And so the need is really down. A couple of years ago, I think it was 2014, don't quote me on that one, but there was a big shift and an increase, so we went from two to three. And now we're seeing the numbers drop for the services that are needed.
So if somebody moves to town and wants to go to preschool here, they'll be able to?
Not always. We have, you'd think there's a waitlist, but they might be able to get into whatever needs or need schools.
The number of applications that we currently have for next year, now while that's always changing, we did look at the current number of applicants and the returning students, and at this point, we're not turning anyone away. There are still spaces available.
That's true, at this point, and with the applications, it's a tricky, it's a fluid process too. But with the applications, just because they apply doesn't mean they're actually gonna come. So we can't actually hang our hat that we have 14 applications, we're gonna have 14 students either. So it really is a fluid process and a moving target at all times. And with the numbers that we have right now, this makes the most sense for us to move to two classrooms.
For next year at this time. Are you... Are you running out of space period in the building?
We do have a space. We are tight, we really enjoy each other's company, we work really well together.
I know that, but if you had another room, would you still be looking at doing the reduction?
Yes, I would still be looking at the reduction just based on the number of student needs right now. The reduction isn't just for space, if it was, we probably would have done this a couple of years ago.
Right, right.
This space issue isn't new to this year.
Right. And I know there's, yeah. There's always a push for like, you know, making sure enough, as many kids as possible do early education, so I just wanted to make sure that...
I mean, it's that interesting philosophy though.
It is.
Because I mean, you're talking about, I talked with some super tenses in Eastern Mass, they're talking about universal preschool, free to all.
Right.
You know, that's not how we have things set up in the city.
It isn't now.
And, you know, a large number of our preschoolers don't come to Deerfield first, they choose other programs or none.
Right.
And so obviously our obligation is for those who have needs or show, or get screened for needs early on, and then obviously we try to pair them with those peers. So, it's one of those things, so it is, we talked about this, you know, kind of things like, you know, you start reducing the number that can come in right away, you know. I mean, right now, the way enrollment would look, you're talking about from very small classes, if we did move forward, so... The balancing the economics versus whatever, but I am seeing it, because I'm seeing heads kind of thinking like, you know, you're reducing the number that can start here is absolutely, you know, it's a long show. If we fill this up in mid-time next year, you know, someone does move in or becomes of age to attend preschool, I would say, it's full, you're gonna have to look elsewhere.
Any else before I move on?
No, sorry, okay.
Okay. Alright, so I'm gonna read through the expenditures, some of these are repeat from last time. We didn't just add all of these since the last meeting, but I'm gonna reiterate them here. So teacher mentor stipends for mentors and grade leaders, this was an addition of $7,200 to the budget. This was on the first draft. These stipends were previously paid from a REAP grant. We want to get them on the local budget because they are an annual recurring expense, and the grant is somewhat unpredictable. Teacher salaries, so I want to explain a little bit here that the teacher salary increase that I'm offering to you now is overall, across the whole school, not a hit directly to the general fund budget, because some of our teachers are paid from other funding sources. So we anticipate that based on a potential contract settlement, there would be an increase of 3.9 percent for our teachers collectively, for $110,000. The net change to the general fund is less, we do have retirements happening, and then our potential new hire for the kindergarten classroom could be at a lower step. So the net change, if you look on this line-by-line page, you'll see here that the net change in the function code that starts 2305 is only $44,000 versus the $110 for the overall increase. But we do fund those, you know, the remaining, the difference from other sources. Similar to that, the IA salary increase, IAs are also funded from several funding sources, so there's not necessarily an increase to the general fund of $26,000, but the IA increase is a 3.6 percent overall, based on their settled contract. We increased teacher and IA professional development. Last time we spoke, this number was up quite significantly. This was one of the items that we did reduce down based on the need to drop our percentage overall. We had asked for about $10,000 and we're increasing this only by two this time around. We did increase summer salaries in the last budget, that's not a change here, that's a $6,000 increase based on expenditures from the prior three years. Textbooks, similar increase with the first draft of the budget by $1,700 to cover items previously paid from a grant. Nature's classroom also was included in the first draft of the budget, an increase of $2,950. Sped contracted services, we added $7,000 to cover consultation fees for special needs students, that was also added in the first draft. And same with transportation, that is not new to this draft, that was included in the last for almost a $17,000 based on needs for our students. And security, same, this was included in the first draft of the budget for a $1,500 increase to cover any potential unperceived maintenance issues that come with the new KFOB system. And then we have wage increase and adjustments for non-union personnel, so this is administration, central office staff, secretaries, principals, et cetera. This increase is $34,800. I do want to highlight that this is not all wage increases. It's partially due because of the cost share going up with Deerfield's enrollment being different than last year. It also accounts for a $3,000 increase in summer custodial support. We also had a secretarial position that was previously paid from school choice, and we're moving that onto the general fund for next year. Any questions about that before I do? Last time we met, we had said that we were looking for funds to support a new Coda, a .6 position. We are looking to fund that by school choice. And then the expenditures here on the bottom are some changes that I made since the last meeting, some are since the last meeting and some were included in the first draft. So utilities, I cannot figure out why utilities have been inflated so much over the years in Deerfield, but I did look at the actual electric bills from the last three years, and they seem to be incredibly over budgeted in that line. So I was able to bring that down about $18,000.
We were grouped in with... I can't even remember, a couple of years back, we were talking about Springfield was... We were kind of all grouped in and Springfield was involved with the buying, and then they backed out, and that really jacked our price up quite a bit, so maybe there's been some negotiations since then and it's come down. But I think that was one of the reasons why it went way up.
And I did look at, like, the most recent bills are obviously the highest with it being winter. And we're not even spending $5,000 a month, and we had almost doubled that budget.
Okay, well that's good.
That allowed us to bring that expense down.
Maybe some of the green communities grants and improvements we've had here have been paying off, so.
Last draft, we talked about the employee separation cost reduction. We do have an increase in retirement payouts for next fiscal year. We also talked about this last time, that we removed a $5,000, that was in custodial contract services. The funds have not necessarily been used for that in the prior years, so that helped bring the budget number down. And the other major change that we have since the first draft is to remove the .4 FTE psychologist that we were looking to build into the budget, so that also helped reduce our number. I know it's a lot of information, so I'll wait for your comments, questions.
Is the new hire, is that removed for budget reasons?
Yes.
Yeah.
I wanna see.
Why originally?
Originally because we have a social and relational program, and the students in that program require a high level of service that is, we would better be able to serve if we had a part-time school psychologist in a Coda to meet those needs. These are the students that are at risk of being tuitioned out at about an average of $70,000 a student. So we're really trying to build our program. And to have both of those, I think we would have a stronger program, but to keep the budget coming in at like a 2.6 or 3.0.
What would the budget be with that?
I don't know.
So if it was a part-time position, you know, we could be looking at a 1 percent increase or close to a 1 percent increase.
And is that adding to somebody who's already here, just giving them more time here, or is that just bringing somebody new in .4?
It would be bringing somebody new on.
Let's think about that one a bit.
It just seems like it's one of those things that you've raised...
Every year?
Increasing concern about, yeah, well, and it impacts everybody.
It really does, I think the services are across the building, we have a... Many teachers, if you look over, will be shaking their heads, yes, along with our school psychologists that are sitting here, you know, they're taxed.
Well then the other thing, you know, this is some petty, it's small stuff, but I think of stuff that, you know, I noticed we're moving things on that were previously paid by a grant. So I wonder how often that happens, where we get a grant, we get used to something, and then the grant goes away, and we have to continue to fund it. And so that happens, I guess, the $17,000 is a piddly small amount of money. But I wonder how many times that happens over the course of five or 10 years, and you wind up with large amounts. I mean, it's not all that's important, we need it to educate our kids, and needs change and all that stuff, but I wonder...
So I mean, the REAP grants are federal grants, and so that's gonna be depending on, put it this way, depending on the administration. And those kind of go, so you'll get some, you'll put things up and you'll put things onto the grant.
Yep.
And then the REAP grant has slowly gotten smaller and smaller.
Yeah.
So...
What different one?
Which is different than some other kinds of times you get grants, and, you know, we talk about whether or not, you know, you put a position in place, and we know the grant's gonna go away in three years.
Right.
In this particular one, we're talking about the REAP grant, which is a federal funding grant.
Definitely want to think about that last one for a while.
Appreciate that.
So I think it's important, because you're gonna, should I go into the next part to talk about how, why this is lower? Because we're using more school choice than we ever have in the past, and so, and we talked about this, it's kind of a, from a revenue standpoint, it's been adjusted because we're overspending what we're taking in.
Yes.
Jumping right to the end of that.
Sure.
So our school choice funds for next year are looking to be down about $100,000. So that's something that we had to take into consideration when building this budget. And that's also part of the reason that that position was removed, because we knew that we needed to help offset some of those things. So after some conversation, we met with Ken ahead of time and reviewed with Tina and Darius. What we're looking to present for school choice use is essentially using what we took in last year, which is more than what we're gonna take in next year. So FY '20, we took about $450,000 in, and FY '21, we're looking at taking in $350,000.
Can you just stop right there and just explain that change, please?
There's been a change in student enrollment through school choice, so it's my understanding that we lost...
A lot of six frames left.
20 students, but we only replaced 10 of them.
So that...
That would be a $50,000.
So spending increments in any services we provide to a choice student on top of the $5,000, so if they're part of us, it could be one or two students, or it could be a bunch of smaller amounts, if someone's receiving additional services. So, that's the important part here, because you look at that number, and the number is actually, you know, we're actually spending more school choice money than we're getting in, we're gonna go into the reserves. And that was the reason why we cut the other position, was that to do both is going to increase the budget and decrease our revenue coming in that's trying to offset that budget. So it kind of spirals us faster, and that was the, that was the concern.
And we have a healthy school choice balance. But if, you know, if we need to spend $430 every year and we're only bringing in $350, our balance is not gonna last very long, so...
And I know we made a conscious effort four years ago now, maybe, to reduce that one class. But that trend never really took off. We never really started to see the, you know, reductions in every conference you go to, and every, you know, every meeting I go to with the state and everybody else, not just the school committee, but select board, or our dwindling population, but it really hasn't come to be, so...
And this time every year, we get a little nervous, like our kindergarten numbers are low, but by the time it's, yes, summer hits, we're just...
But we've, in the region, we've escaped that, because our neighbors are seeing significant reductions. And then we've been able to offset, you know, Frontier and Union Theory District has, is winning the school choice, you know, battle with our neighbors, in the sense of that not only they're losing population, but we're taking the extra percentage to offset our population loss.
Right.
And so, you know, I don't know when that trickle-down's going to occur. Maybe it won't, maybe there'll be a surge in the economy in the area, people will move in, and you know, that kind of stuff. But we have people talking about it, they're right to be talking about it, because I'm looking at neighboring schools that, you know, used to have, you know, having freshman class sizes of 40 when they used to have, close to, be similar sizes to us. You know what I mean? Talking about Turner's, and you're talking about Greenfield, that are far, far smaller than they used to be. So the truth is, that is a problem out there.
But we've been spared a bit.
We've been able to skip it through, being a vibrant community and do what's...
And I would say, I totally, I, we moved Deerfield for the school system, and I spoke to a lot of people, I'm putting it out as well.
Yep.
Good job there, Phil.
Yes. Teachers. Okay.
Okay.
So the...
Well, I just, I mean, if the budget is really a statement of our priorities, and there's so much talk about the need for behavioral kind of health and adjustments, and... And we have, I mean, obviously, yeah, we're spending it down, but if there's a real need for it, isn't that what this question is sort of there for? So I guess it's just something, I mean, I think we should think about a little bit more.
That's true.
I know people are worried that you do it and then you're stuck with it, but if in fact it's, you know, if you need, it needs help temporarily, and the hope is that cohorts aren't always...
I think the way to look at it is that we have about seven students that identify for this program. If one student goes out, we're, we're at $70,000 average tuition, so our money would better be spent...
Here, growing this program.
Yes, supporting and growing the program. But at some point possibly, don't gasp, we could actually have somebody come in, and a student come in, and we could be receiving $70,000 average tuition as well. And so you do have to look at it that way.
That's true, yep, there's a whole list of approach to it all. Yep.
Okay, gasp. So I think one of the questions that I've kind of had going through this process for the first time is, you know, what is a number that can be presented to the town that's not gonna make them cringe?
Two-sixths is great.
But do we have some flexibility to go up with that to try to meet this other need?
There's, it's hard because there's so much expense at the town level too that we're trying to deal with, and... But I think it's worth looking at this specific item and talking that over till the next meeting, seeing what we can do. The budgets in the town is kind of just starting to come together as well, to see where we're at, and...
Do we have a meal stand on all those burritos?
Probably.
And I, I know that the assessment numbers are not ideal either for Frontier, so that's something that happens to...
Yeah, we have nothing from the schools yet, and they were hoping, you know, that I could lend some insight as to where we're at a little bit in the next week or so, but... So I was just wondering...
You're up.
Would you give me a number of what, you know, truly, so you think that's a percent, a full percent?
Well, if it's only gonna be part-time, it's not gonna be a full percent, because a full percent is $49,000, is that what I said here? Or $48,000, so we're talking about a part-time position.
Okay.
So half percent, three-quarter of a percent, we can look at it that way.
Okay.
It'll definitely put us over three.
Right. When do, I was trying to find my calendar right now, when are we going front of the, are you guys officially invited?
Yeah, I haven't seen the invite yet, but...
I haven't seen you.
Let's find out.
That's our timeline to get a number.
Right.
A solid number. And I would recommend, if the committee wants us to put that back into the budget, you go back with that, you start with that number.
I think I would start with that number to start with, and then, you know, see how the rest of the town pulls together with the budget, and, you know, look at this one more month, and then see where we go from there. I'd rather...
But usually, at this meeting, we have, usually have a tentative budget cover and start showing it to the town, but this is where we want to come in at, so...
And you would fund that out of school choice?
Well, no, I mean, I'm sorry to say it like that. Strategically, no, we would ask the town to fund it, and then the fallback is, it's gonna come out of school choice, if we are strongly supporting that, as something in school.
If you change that percentage number, you're changing, that's the amount we're sending to the town to fund.
I get that.
If you lowered that number by adding it more to school choice. That's why I'm saying the number, that 2.68 right now it's on there is adjusted, we added, we took more, finding more funds from school choice to get to that number than we did in the previous year. And so that's the important thing to know, that that's been lowered by using school choice.
Right.
So I'm just wondering about how... So you had that in the original budget. So I always question, like, you have it in the original budget, but you cut your own budget, and then brought it, you cut it yourselves. So I'm just wondering what the fine, what was your plan B, you must have thought, well, we'll get along without it?
Well, originally, the discussion about next year's preschool class happened within the last month too. I mean, it was one of those ideas, but the final decision was not made about, because we're trying to look at the enrollment numbers before we kind of, you know, we're trying to see what, as early as we can in the budget, I mean, trying to hold off as long as we can into the budget season, see what those enrollment numbers, to see if this is what, it was kind of, so that's the big, that's the biggest drop to the overall budget.
But when we came in the first time, what we wanted to come in with was really, if we could have this position, we would like to ask for it, and then when we went back and looked at everything, realized, okay, this, especially with school choice dropping so much.
Right, since the first one, then we were $100,000 less in school choice, then we, so we knew it was gonna be down a bit, but we didn't know it was gonna be down that far.
But if you looked at it with caseloads and job descriptions, between the psychologists that we have, school adjustment counselor, part-time, if we added a new part-time psychologist, you have job descriptions and...
So the part-time new psychologist would either, so yes and no, would either take on the program needs, because we have enough for that program needs, which would then allow our school psychologists and school adjustment counselors to service the rest of the population. to service the rest of the population, or, you know, whatever, if somebody else wanted to take on that program that already knows it, to ensure that way, we have enough needs to go around, to provide the services.
And the intent of school choice is to offer something you normally wouldn't offer, I mean.
The intent of school choice is depending on the committee who uses school choice.
Is that right?
So, I mean, we had some towns that are not, have not used school choice, use the word smart, they had different demands on their budgets, and they've used it all up, and so we're fighting to keep seventy thousand dollars in school choice in order to not be accidentally starting off the school in deficit.
Right.
Because you got to get the whole, you know, Deerfield, nobody being larger, I'm talking about, you know, a couple hundred less, you're talking about seventy or fifty thousand dollars, just in case you have, you have one small adjustment going out, and all of a sudden, or a kid's not coming, and that kind of thing, and all of a sudden, you're starting the year off with layoffs. You know what I mean, but, you know, so, you know, Deerfield, you know, you're, kind of, your number would probably be about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that you'd have to have, just for fluctuations, because look at how we went down a hundred thousand dollars in one year. You know what I mean, so you got to be, you got to have that kind of as a backup there, so, just kind of saying, so, when you're saying, what is it used for? It really depends on the committee and the needs of the building. In the beginning, it was always, the original kind of thing, was just buy a few extra things, we'll buy computers with it, you know what I mean? We'll buy the extra things that we can afford, and then slowly, well, also the fact that our school choice numbers were so high, that we thought, oh, we can offset some of our budget, we can take the burden off the percentage increase to taxpayers, and meanwhile, you have taxpayers saying, you know, we have all these school choice people, why aren't they paying, helping us with the bill, you know, so you have, it's a balancing of those kind of things out.
You know, using those funds to, one, to, you know, keep, keep us from having to lose a child to another program.
And one consideration is to do half of it on school choice and half of it on general funds, so that it's not a full hit, and then we try next year to get it all on local budget, because it's also not good to continue stacking school choice.
With salary, for sure, yeah, instead of a program.
It's almost all salary. School choice.
Yeah.
Buying, right? Okay, so, I guess, sort of consensus to, that last idea sounded like a good one, to.
Yeah.
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 Put the, shoot for the position back in, but. Put it all in the town budget.
Although, you think to split that, maybe half and half?
Yeah, I think that's probably the most reasonable. Yeah, like, some of it is in regular, if it's something we say we need, then I think that's where it should be.
There'd be a different call. Sorry, we're just talking about what exactly half is, because a school psychologist is going to have a doctor, there's going to be a different call, it's going to be an additional.
Right.
Would have a school adjustment counselor instead of a psychopath, or do you need the testing ability?
To defer back to Tina.
I would say that our school psychologist that's sitting right here would tell you that she's got tons of testing and evaluations, because we'd appreciate the help, but if it becomes down to a school adjustment counselor or a school psychologist, it's almost like you have the flexibility, as just looking what the pool looks like, to be honest.
I would say, I would agree, I would try to, you were talking about, the amount of money, you were talking about overall, you know.
I don't think it's a huge difference.
So we can put that together, and, you know, you're looking at a number, I'm leaning over to Vass, like, what's our, the percentage, you want to, you want to add to this meeting, have a meeting, if we can, you know what I mean, you can always have another meeting.
Of course.
We can have a strong, if we have a strong percentage that we can go to the town, the town's going to want that. And I'm telling you, Trevor, that you know that, but, you know, they're waiting on the biggest impacts on the budget, so.
Two-point-six-eight.
If we're looking at.
Yeah, I think we're probably, right, I think we're looking, probably getting it up to about three percent.
Two-point-nine-nine-nine-nine.
So the truth is, we can create the exact percentage you want, but based on how much we do off school choice, so it really is, you can say, this is the number we want to be at, we want to be at two-point-nine, and then, you know, the difference will be out of school choice, and then Sherry will do the math on that. I think that's, I'm comfortable with that as well.
Okay, well, you're wearing two hats, sort of, so it's a good idea to go two-nine-nine?
Sure.
Add in as much of the point four as you can, and.
Because I'm just worried that, you know, we're saving a percent here or there, half of a percent, and we wind up spending two times that, to have, we need to leave, you know, or be serviced in a different program, and then, or we could actually.
But that's not the issue, I think the issue right now is just tactically about, I think everybody's saying we would like to look at putting this person back in the budget.
Right.
The question is just tactically right now, for the presentation that administration has to make to the town, do we want them to go in with a three-point-two, and not negotiate against themselves, Mary, so aptly put it, or do we want to go in at a two-nine-nine?
I think the two-nine-nine, or two-nine, I just think that you can keep it under three, that's helpful for the town, and then we can advocate why we're doing that, and why we're, you know, that we're nervous about spending down this school choice, and just kind of keep telling them that, that we're, that this is the issue.
Oh, we are spending down.
Yes, we are. We need to make that clear, but the risk, otherwise, is pretty large.
Okay, great, so I think that's clear, and you interrupted your flow, so back to you.
I don't have anything else, I have something.
Okay. Oh, we need to put, we need to hit the school choice budget for some more arts partnership?
Oh, the arts partnership, yes, I will add that in there.
And if the general consensus is about seventy-five-hundred?
Typical use.
Yeah. Okay. Sounds good, so, any further discussion then about the budget from anybody? No? I don't think we did any votes on that.
Maybe just, quickly, as I just run through this stuff, the administrative technology support, is that moved from somewhere else, the building tech software license, that fourteen thousand, was a new line item, but was it pulled from a different?
Uh, tell me what.
That was twenty-two-fifty, administrative technology and support for schools.
Yeah, we just re-coded it.
From somewhere else.
It was in the twenty-two-ten line.
Okay.
There should be a negative for almost the exact same amount, and that's just because of Desi's system, they changed how things are coded now.
Yep.
That's for the copiers and printers in the building. There's another line that's like that as well. If you look at fourteen-fifty, fourteen-fifty got moved to forty-four-hundred, so that's not actually a decrease or an increase as well, it's reallocating a salary of one of the data specialists.
Yep.
Again, they changed where she would be coded from.
Okay. And the classroom teacher salaries, the hundred and six is the contract. I think that was the largest increase, was, I think we're, all-in expenditures is one-point-five million, and that was twenty-two-oh-five. Just, I just want to see where it goes. Oh, I see, the total was forty-three, because you had all the reductions, gotcha, okay.
All right, thank you for that presentation. Moving on to new business, and should we take them in order?
You can take them in order unless you want to go into executive session to discuss this, I can give you kind of a synopsis. It's been done, it's my third meeting talking about this, it's been done both ways. One was just talk about it in open session, one wanted to talk about it in executive session, so.
Anybody have a strong feeling?
How you want to do that, but I can, let me just give you the overview, and then you can decide. You know, so basically, the negotiation committee at the last meeting proposed a one-year settlement. At the committee meeting, we received a, a new way of looking at the, I don't say a new way of looking at, a different salary schedule, that we thought that there was enough change, and that was going to take several meetings, which would be several months, in order to really look at and go through those changes, and so we offered a one-year settlement agreement, and that was accepted by the association, and then we're going to continue to go right back and start looking, and doing some work on looking at what was proposed, and kind of work out all the details of it, because there's a lot of, there's a lot of questions about what they're proposing, so that's kind of where we're at, so, and we're going to build a working group to kind of dive in, look at the numbers of that, and make sure it kind of, because the back and forth has got kind of stiff.
Yeah.
And so I think, you know, that kind of thing, we just have conversations about numbers, what these things mean, what the concerns are, what their concerns are, and then try to hopefully get something that is molded in a object that both sides can really start to then go back to the table and talk about, so that the work group is non-binding, but it's, it's trying to get those numbers in, asking a lot of questions back and forth, where it's not, I guess, the tension that was in negotiations.
Yeah, that'd be great.
So, anyway, so the teachers have accepted the one-year agreement, and so each committee needs to vote to accept in the current agreement, I know I sent this out in email, but the current agreement on the table for one year is to increase steps three through thirteen at one percent, and two percent at steps fourteen and twenty. The steps and such have already been given, because we're running off the old contracts, so steps were already awarded at the beginning of the year, not the exact beginning, we haven't done that, because we haven't got a settlement.
I'd make a motion to approve the Union Thirty-Eight Teachers' One-Year Settlement Agreement, presented.
Second.
All in favor?
I, you second.
All right. Moving on to, seems like we have policies again.
Policies, yes, so, you should have them as part of your packet. So these policies are very dry, and.
We have a poor reading.
So, so. The, so basically, MASC, you know, who we work with, annually will give us an update on policies that they want us to, either there's laws have been changed, or they give strong recommendations to change those policies. They gave me summary sheet that Trevor has right there, and I pulled up, and it kind of does, it's the Cliff Notes of what the differences are between the two policies. What we didn't do this time was a, in the past, Donna had created a, kind of, these are the red lines that change these kind of thing, because this is the, it's mostly legal, and not kind of created by the community. As I read through them, you'll kind of see what I mean by that, it's really straightforward, so, remember, we do a, we do a reading, and the select will be voted at the next meeting, so you can ask me to go into as much detail as I can try to give on some of these policies, but as you see, they're very blanket, one, the first one is the educational equity policy. Basically, it's basically making that the goal is to try to meet the needs of all students, and just making a statement on that. You know, and, and basically, it breaks down that we support, you know, getting all students ready to live in a diverse local, national, and global community, provide our students with high-quality curriculum, support in a logical resources, providing educational equities, a variety of professional development, you know, and so on, so, so, just a very basic, general equity policy. We had one before on staff, I mean, on staff, on file, it just didn't, it was kind of a general, this one kind of is more, a little more specific. The second one.
Public comments?
Is which one?
Is it public comments?
Oh, equal educational, equal educational opportunities, is kind of an extension of the previous one. I'm going to my own Cliff Notes here. And to make sure that we are offering every effort to make all our programs available to all students, so. And also to protect the dignity of all students as individuals, and make consideration, sympathetic understanding of their personal feelings, particularly in reference of their race, color, sex, gender, identity, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, homeless status, physical and intellectual differences, pregnancy or pregnancy-related conditions, so that's kind of following within the law, but you can hear that second part there, and so that is a new policy.
I don't know, suggest that unless people want you to do this, that since we are being assigned to basically read them, that we'll read them, and we will come back at the next meeting, vote on them, and ask you, we have fifty questions.
The other ones are actually a lot easier, the homeless student one is just basically, they're updating the one that we actually just did last year, or a year prior, and the next one's the military children, they updated that one, and they updated the opportunities for children in foster care. So again, it's making sure that you don't have any policies in place, the general gist of them that, that works against those students in enrolling, or, you know, achieving graduation, should their life circumstances change because of those, those issues, so, in general, those are even more straightforward. All right?
Okay.
There are a lot more coming, so there were a total of thirty changes to what they recommended, we're doing them in sections, and hopefully that we can weed out the ones that are not, some of them are just like one-sentence changes, and we'll try to make sure it's a lot clearer on those. All right?
Okay. Moving on to reports, I don't have a report on Ken's behalf, Carrie, thank you for your email.
Yes, thank you.
On the collaborative, and how about principal's report?
Yep, I haven't got a report. So Sue Scott is our amazing adaptive P E teacher, and she organized our first annual K through five Young Athletes Day, which is kind of a spin-off of Special Olympics, so there was laughter, joy, and the sweet smell of victory, as students participated, and were cheered on by their classmates and family, and this event was capped off with presentation of certificates and awards. The kids worked hard on their variety of gross motor skills, and they're very proud to show off their talents, so, big shout-out to Sue. And then we finished, or, no, we're actually in full swing with our data meetings in grades four through six. Grade-level teams have fluidly used a variety of data points and resources, we were mentioned there to ensure positive student learning outcomes. And our instructional leadership team continues to be working on John Hattie's work, and we're really focusing in on ten mind frames and the Golden Circle, which is kind of looking at the why, so what you're doing, why are you doing it? And in kindergarten, our students are exploring animal tracks, tracks, capturing ice and snow, that's a great way to launch into the inquiry into what animals, including humans, do to adapt to the winter weather. I clearly go tanning, we'll talk about that later. The grade four field trip to the Peukat Museum just happened recently, and those children were able to explore and create a Peukat village. They always loved that field trip. And six A is in the midst of acquiring the two watermelon filling stations, you know, they've been awarded that Yankee Candle Grant. And. And, you know, another fender, it looks like, is gonna be helping supply all students and staff who do not have a reusable water bottle with a water bottle. And they're building their journalism unit, so students are really excited about how this fundraiser and this initiative has been. I just interviewed, or just, I just was interviewed by two of students in Julian's class, it was fun to have that interaction. And, well, we have the Hundredth Day of School on Friday, because we are only having a two-hour delay tomorrow, you heard it here first. Okay, or the Hundred Day possibly could be Monday, no question.
More or closer.
What's close today?
March.
Very close today.
Because we have, we have, you learned...
Close today.
They, they don't have, but we didn't have you, they don't have you.
Mary works there, that's why I didn't tell her.
I know.
All right, moving on, plus anyone have any questions for Tina?
Nope.
Superintendent's report, anything else? Executive session, nobody wants to go there? We could adjourn it.
We all agree.